Ordinary meeting held twenty three December twenty twenty three.
That document will be exhibit fourteen.
Item one hundred. Document O L G dot zero zero seven dot zero zero one dot zero 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 four. Affidavit of F Portelli, twenty five July twenty twenty four.
That will be exhibit fifteen.
Item one hundred and nine, document I N Q dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one zero three six. Agenda of ordinary meeting dated the thirtieth of August twenty twenty three.
Exhibit sixteen.
Item one two one, document L C C dot zero zero two dot zero zero nine dot five nine two six. Mayor. Resolution of ordinary meeting held twenty second of September two thousand and ten.
Exhibit seventeen.
Item one two two, document L C C dot zero zero two dot zero zero nine dot five nine two four. Resolution for ordinary meeting held twenty one June two thousand and ten.
Exhibit eighteen.
Item one two seven. Document L C C dot zero one zero dot zero zero seven dot nine eight two seven. An email chain between S Blackadder and F Portelli.
Exhibit nineteen.
And that completes that exercise.
Thank you.
I call Tim Pe- Paisley.
Do you take an oath or an affirmation, sir?
Ah oath, please.
Want to help you with that?
He said by a mighty God that the evidence is obvious. He proved the whole truth and nothing's happened. So please say.
I do.
Yes, Miss McDonald.
Please state your full name.
Tim Paisley.
Your current occupation?
I'm manager of circular economy.
And that's at the Liverpool City Council?
Correct.
When did you first start working at Liverpool City Council?
August the eighth twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen?
Yep.
When you commenced working, what was your role or occupation?
I was the procurement business partner.
And then over time, did you move to a different area of Liverpool City Council?
Correct, yes.
And what were area was that?
It was called city presentation.
And city presentation, if you could describe it at a general level, what type of responsibilities did it have?
It was pretty much the operational arm of council, so basically rubbish, roads, parks. Environment as well, so looking after environment, there was environmental team there. And you also had strategic waste, which was placed there as well.
After moving to that area, have you, sorry, withdraw that, over time. The title or name. Different sections or divisions of the council has changed. But over time, have you remained working in the area? That has responsibility for matters such as waste collection.
Correct, so just just to be clear, when I was the procurement business partner, city presentation was my customer, essentially. So I was looking after the depot. With procurement perspective.
All right, now, can I ask you to maybe speak up a little bit?
Sure.
That would be good. So you moved then to city presentation?
I I was at city presentation on day one as the procurement business partner. So I was tasked with fixing a lot of the contracts that had expired. Yep.
And from that role, did you move to another role within?
Uh, correct, so I was the procurement business partner, I think, for about six months. And then I was a contract specialist for about four weeks. And then I applied for an expression of interest to become the waste and cleansing manager.
And were you successful with that?
Correct, yes.
When did you, were you appointed to the position of waste and cleansing manager?
I believe it was twenty twenty nineteen. I think in August, probably on the same date that I started one year, so on the eighth, I believe. Yep.
How long were you in that role?
I acted for, I believe, a year, maybe a bit longer, from from memory.
So you were performing that role in an acting capacity?
Correct, yes.
And then were you appointed to the permanent position?
Uh, yes, so I applied for the permanent position.
And you were successful?
Correct, yes.
And again, roughly, did that occur in about twenty twenty?
I I I believe so, I think it may have been a year later. Yeah, from 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 memory, yes, I'm not a hundred percent clear on the dates.
Now, from being appointed as the waste and cleansing manager, did you move to any other roles?
We rebranded, so it was still the same position, but we just named it resource recovery.
Resource recovery?
Correct, yes.
So you were then the resource recovery manager?
Yeah, it was just a simple title change. Yep.
And were you appointed to any other role after that?
So I did act as a director for about six months, I think, or five months.
Can I just stop you there? Acting as the director, what was the particular division known?
Uh, I believe it was city presentation at that time, if not operations.
And you acted in that role for five or six months?
Correct.
Again, roughly, can you indicate when did you commence that acting directorship?
I think in twenty twenty two, the start, probably in the first quarter of twenty twenty two.
But towards the beginning of twenty twenty?
I I believe so, yes, I know I finished at the end of June, I believe.
You finished in that acting role towards the end of June?
Uh, June or July, I can't remember the actual date, but somewhere around there.
When finishing in that role, did you take a period of extended leave?
Uh, yes, I did.
And was that a period of about three months?
Uh, I believe it was about three months, correct.
And again, roughly, are we looking round October, November twenty twenty two when you returned to work?
Yes, I think so.
When you returned to work, what role were you occupying then?
So I originally came back to my role, um, so the the I believe the resource recovery manager role. And then, um, I can't remember the dates, but I I was, um. I was still technically in my role, but I was moved aside the work on the Cow Pasture Road site and some projects related to that. So I had another member of my staff act up in my role, and he took on the responsibilities and duties of that.
Now, your your current role is, uh. Um, sorry, could you repeat your current role?
Yes, circular economy manager. So that's strategic waste. Yep.
When were you appointed to that role?
Last year, I believe, I can't really recall the actual month, it was about a year.
Now. Upon your return round November twenty twenty two, you said you were moved, in a sense, to one side to work on particular projects. In working for those projects, did that then lead to your appointment as the circular economy manager?
Uh, we were organically heading that way anyway, um, just to give a little bit of context. When I originally took over waste in twenty nineteen, it was quite small and underdeveloped. Um, there was a period of no investment in that department, so I was tasked with bringing the operations up to a level that would satisfy the community. At a certain point before the split occurred, we, the department was quite large, larger than some directorates. Um, so, um, I'll let you ask the other questions later, but yeah, just.
Um, you just spoke about a split, and when you referred to your current position as circular economy manager. You did say that's dealing with strategy. You're referring to, was that the split between operations and strategy?
Correct.
When, again roughly, when did that split occur?
Um, I believe it happened early last year, there was a realignment.
So early twenty twenty four?
To be honest, I can't recall the actual date, but I did undertake the process, so I think, yeah, I think we can provide paperwork.
Don't don't trouble yourself too much with the precise date, but early last year, doing the best you can.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, the split between operations and strategy. When you say the operations of the waste division, are you talking about collection of waste?
Um, so collection of waste materials or cleansing, that's within the council's capability, so we have actual staff. Things like the three bin system, so curbside bin collections, that's that's predominantly, that's done by a contractor. So strategic waste looks after the contracts.
All right, so. A household who puts out the three bins, uh, that's done by a contractor?
Correct.
Sorry, that work is undertaken by a contractor?
Yep.
And the operation of that contract, that comes under your jurisdiction?
Yes, so I run the the tenders for those contracts, they're quite high spend, as you can imagine in waste. You know, we we have about eighty thousand plus households, three bins usually for each household. That equates to over a million pickups a month.
All right, so that's part of your jurisdiction. The collection of waste, uh, which I think you said is undertaken by council staff. Is that, for example, waste at a local park or in the C B D? Is that an example of the collection that they would undertake?
Yes, so that's one example, also bulky waste collections, so that's that's also an internal activity. And mattress collections now, that used to be done externally, now that's done internally.
Is bulky collection something that might be described, I don't know if it's in your area, but in other councils like curbside cleanup?
Yeah, people have different terms for it, so.
That's the idea.
It's usually like a big pile of.
Yeah.
You know, materials, yep.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
What about businesses in the in the in the L G A, is that something done by council or is that contractors?
So that's that's not something that we do at the moment, but it is in our base strategy, so it's something that we were anticipating on doing in the future. I think we'll, I'm guessing we'll talk about the strategy soon, but.
Yes.
The strategy, um, you know, we we kind of regged for the moon with our strategy, so.
But how how is it done at the moment?
At at the moment, we don't touch trade waste, that's what they call it, so we don't we don't service businesses other than for the mattress shredder.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just want to take you to some operational charts. Uh, the first one is document L C C dash zero zero one dash zero zero two dash zero 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 one, and it can be live streamed. We've got a number of these organizational charts, you can see at the right hand top corner, it's dated June twenty twenty four.
Yep.
There are a number of directorships, and if I can draw your attention to the one for operations. And we've got an acting director, Peter.
Peter Sikluna.
Peter.
Sikluna.
Sikluna, thank you for that. And at that point, was your position under waste and cleansing manager of waste services?
Correct, there might have been a typo, I believe it was resource recovery during that time period, so maybe maybe it didn't translate on this document, but. At some point, we became resource recovery, and I believe that happened before twenty twenty four.
Excuse me. If we then go to document L C C dash zero zero one dash zero zero two dash zero 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 four.
You want that?
Yes, please. You can see the date towards the top right hand corner, July twenty twenty four.
Correct, yep.
If you look at the directorship for operations, now we've got second box down from the bottom is circular economy centre.
Yep.
Manager circular economy.
Correct, yep.
And that's your role?
That's correct, yes.
Moving up the boxes under that directorship, we still have a box for waste and cleansing. Uh, with a manager of waste services.
Correct, so we wanted to make the distinction between operations and strategic.
That continues, excuse me. Would you bring up I N Q dot zero zero four dot zero zero one dot zero zero one two, and it can be live streamed? This is a document entitled A Proposed Model of Six to Four Directorates, I'm sorry. Our understanding of this is that the decrease in directorships. From six to four has now been implemented? Is that your understanding?
I believe it's in a transitional phase at the moment, so I think.
I'm just concentrating at the number of directorships at the moment? Is it your understanding that it's moved from six to four?
I I believe, like, to be honest, I'm not a hundred percent across the changes other than the updates that we receive like this, so I I think, I believe so. I believe some directors are no longer here, and I believe some departments may have shifted under this this structure.
Under this proposal, and again, we understand that looking at departments underneath, which are in the purple boxes. That hasn't been settled yet, but under this proposal, again, under operations, we can see circular economy centre.
Yes.
And that's your area where you're manager?
I believe so, yes.
And again, we've got the separate purple box for the waste and cleansing department.
Correct.
All right. Now, at the moment, your direct report is to the. Position of director or acting director of operations?
That's correct, yes.
And do you have a director of operations at the moment, or is it an acting director?
An acting director.
And who is the acting director?
That's Peter Sikluna.
That was the person who identified when I took you back to the May twenty twenty four?
Correct.
Now. Can I move back to your role now as the manager of the circular economy? You've given evidence that the contracts for the collection of the three bins, that comes under your responsibility? You also referred to, and we're going to get to this, uh, the mattress shredding operation? That comes within your responsibility?
Uh, correct, yes, it's the only operational function in my team.
The only operational function, did you say?
Uh, only operational function that we control, we have the technical knowledge to oversee that.
Are there any other responsibilities that you undertake as part of this strategy department?
Yes, so strategic waste, um, the primary objective of strategic waste, which we call ourselves circular economy, is to divert as much material from landfill as possible. It's in strategy, a local strategy that we created back in twenty twenty one, which was endorsed. We're also driven by state government strategy, which is the waste and sustainable materials strategy of twenty forty one. And there are targets set in these strategies, such as eighty percent diversion of all waste streams by twenty thirty.
Sorry, eighty percent of?
Of all waste streams, that could be recycling, green waste. Material within the red bin, which is something that we just recently rolled out, so food, organics, garden, organics, waste management, F O G O. That's something that we just rolled out last week to sixty two thousand households, so that's a pretty big endeavour, so we we're all about shifting behaviours. Just just to give you, to break it down very simply, to to throw waste in landfill attracts a waste levy. So it's approximately about three hundred and twenty something dollars this this year, and half of it goes to state government as an additional tax called the waste levy. So our objective is to divert material like that. So, for example, the red bin waste, I think it equated to fifty two thousand tonnes of material last year. You know, at three hundred and twenty something dollars, and F O G O should hopefully remove about eighteen thousand, fifteen thousand tonnes of that material. Into the green bin, which can be recycled into compostable material, so. Our primary objective is to pretty much educate the community, set policy. And change waste behaviours and make people aware, we also reach out to children, students. That's about as simple as I can make it, if you want me to elaborate, just please ask.
And what you've just described is the notion of strategic waste generally, that is diverting. Household and perhaps as you expand to other forms of waste out of landfill to be recycled, reused, repurposed, composted and the like.
Yep, correct.
Now, before twenty twenty two. The. Council for its operations, including waste management. Had it had a depot at Rose Street?
Correct, uh, Rose Street's been the primary depot for Liverpool Council since nineteen sixty seven, I believe.
And it also had a facility, is it at Devonshire Street?
Uh, we refer to it as Western Depot.
Western Depot?
Correct, yes.
Has the Western Depot ever been used?
During, so it's always been used as an ancillary kind of location, it's essentially just a dust ball. Um, we did activate it during the COVID period, to split the depot in two for business continuity. That was to mitigate any kind of contact with one another, so if one part of the depot went down, we can still continue services for the community. Uh, that was a pretty challenging time, to be honest, during that period for for this council, but we we managed to get through it.
Now, the Rose Street depot, um, as it sounds, that being a depot, does that mean, or does its work include. Different equipment like trucks and other pieces of equipment, they're housed there?
Uh, predominantly, yes, sorry.
Sorry, I know, um, it's not your fault.
Yeah, so predominantly, most of our equipment resides at the Rose Street depot, there are some sites around the L G A and local government area that we house other vehicles or equipment.
And it also has a mechanical facilities?
Uh, cor- correct, so it did originally have the the mechanical workshop at Rose Street, but that's been relocated to Cow Pasture Road, yeah.
When was it relocated to Cow Pasture Road?
I believe the end of twenty twenty two, I believe, so as soon as we acquired the site, it happened, I believe, relatively quickly. Just just to add a bit of context.
Well, no, if you can just answer my questions, we'll get through this a little bit more quickly.
Yeah, sure.
All right, so, um. You've given evidence that. You went on leave for a period in late twenty twenty two and then came back to the council.
Correct.
Um, when you returned to the council, had Cow Pasture Road been purchased?
Yes.
I want to take you to before Cow Pasture Road had been purchased. At once, at at a stage earlier than that. Was this investigation or examination of whether there were other sites that could be leased? For either a depot type operation or a mechanical workshop operation?
No, so, um, we we looked at Cow Pasture Road, this is towards the end for our left, this is what you.
No, I'm not referring to that, I'm asking you bef- before Cow Pasture Road.
Yep.
Was purchased.
Yep.
And a period before then.
Yep.
Was there an investigation or a looking at leasing by the council? Of another site for the mechanical workshop?
No. As far as I'm aware, no.
You had no, do you know Paul Sharkey?
Yes, I do.
You had no conversation with Paul Sharkey about that?
I had a conversation with Paul Sharkey when we saw Cow Pasture Road, so we, uh, we were invited. I believe by some councillors to attend this site. We weren't looking for a mechanical workshop, but we were looking, I believe at the time, for a solution. Because the mechanical workshop wasn't actually fit for part of us, I believe there might be some Facebook videos or YouTube videos that Liverpool published at some point. The state of the depot wasn't. You know, it wasn't really up to scratch for modern standards, especially for for a mechanical workshop, but. We were invited to Cow Pasture Road, and that was the first time I heard of it, um, just to have a look at some premises there, I brought, I believe, Paul Sharkey along. And some, um. Uh, some of the staff, because I wanted an expert opinion, um, if that site perhaps might. You know, potentially be a viable option, is that, that's how it was presented to me.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, it was put to you as a?
A potential viable op- A potential viable option. So I wasn't really thinking about the mechanical workshop at the time, but I was invited to Cow Pasture Road. Can't remember who, if it was the acting CEO or the mayor or something. I was just told to go to some site, and I went there with Paul Sharkey. And there was some guy that showed us around to look at the premises. And we were asked if this site could, you know, is this something that council would be interested in for leasing? And we had a look at the premises. I believe the owner, there was an owner there, some family member or something. I can't remember exactly who was there, but I know there was some councillors. And we said, look, we'll look at it. And then we didn't really do much. So I asked Paul to give me a report on what his thoughts were on that, on that site. And it wasn't really, it wasn't, it wasn't like the right site for us. That's what Paul essentially said. And nothing happened from that point.
This attendance at the premises, that was before you went on your long leave?
Correct, yes.
That was when you were acting director of operations?
Yes, yeah.
You said that in that evidence that you just gave, that you went to look at the premises because the council was interested in possibly leasing them?
Well, there was no, it wasn't really clear then. I was just literally invited to go to this site. I didn't know anything about it.
All right, can I just stop you there? Who invited you?
I just know, I just remember there were some councillors. The acting CEO was meant to turn up. He didn't turn up. I brought some staff with me. And yeah, it was a pretty casual thing, to be honest. It wasn't really planned or anything like that.
So in answer to my question, who invited you, your answer is, I can't recall?
I can't recall.
The acting CEO at the time was Peter Diplos?
Correct, yes.
So you turned up there, you had some staff members with you, one of whom was Paul Star, Sharkey, I'm sorry?
Yes.
And in attending the site and having a look round, what were you assessing it for?
I was just told to visit that site. I went and had a look. I was told it was a workshop. And that's why I invited Paul along too, because he is a subject matter expert. He knows workshops. He's been doing it for forty years. I didn't know anything about workshops, to be honest. And I brought him along. And we had a look and we're like, well, it's far away from our operations. We talked internally, we didn't talk to the councillors. And yeah, that was pretty much the end of that. Like Paul wrote a response with his staff on how they felt about the site. And I'm not sure if you have that evidence or if it was provided. But yeah, nothing much. I pretty much left shortly after that, because I was going through a bit of drama at that stage that I was preoccupied with.
And the report that Paul produced was something along the lines of this site is not for us?
I believe so. I haven't looked at it in a number of years, but I remember it was like, we can't lease this thing. It's not, you know, it's not for us. We should own something. But that wasn't, that, you know, like, I didn't know we were buying Cow Pasture Road until I came back. So.
But in going to the site, bringing your staff with you, including Paul Sharky, you must have been, had in your mind the use, the possible use to the council of the site? Can you recall what was in your mind when you were looking at the site back then?
I just had an open mind. So I just, I was told to go there. As a director, you're usually called by councillors quite regularly. And I was, I was just like, you know, come to this site. Can't, I think, yeah, I can't recall who said that. It was either, I think it was one of the councillors.
Sorry, a councillor told you to go to the site?
I believe it might have been the mayor, to be honest. But like, I can't, I can't recall, to be honest, a hundred percent clearly. I just know that I was basically summoned to go there. I said, they said that it's a workshop and.
Who said it was a workshop? You said they said it was a workshop. Who told you that?
It must have been either the mayor or the councillors.
All right. Can I just pause? I am asking you questions that occurred a number of years ago. When you answer, it would have been or it could have been, do you actually have a recollection? Or are you sitting back and thinking, look in the circumstances, I think it should have been this? Because there's a difference in the type of evidence, and we just need to make sure that we know the basis of your evidence.
All right. It's like a very hazy period of time, because I was dealing with a lot of industrial matters at that point. So I was just fitting it in my day. The depot, Rose Street, required a lot of upgrades at that point in time.
Can I just stop you? What I asked you was who told you to go to the site? And your answer was, and again, I'm just making rough notes.
I believe it was the mayor.
All right. Can I just stop you there?
But I can't recall exactly.
Okay, you can't recall exactly. Do you have a recollection that it was the mayor?
Well, I object. I think there comes a point at which the witness has been clear that he can't recall. The questions need to be mindful of that. And to say, well, try, tell us what you do recall, he's done that. There are other questions that is appropriate to ask, but to press him to recall something risks real unfairness.
I'm not sure where they just yet, Mr. Emmett. I think I would be assisted by just understanding for myself. And I'm not being critical because it was a number of years ago. But I think what council assisting is, is driving it. And it's a natural way to speak when someone says, oh, it would have been. I'm understanding you as you're doing your best, sitting here now to draw to your mind what you think happened, but you don't necessarily have a clear recollection. Is that fair?
That's correct, yeah. So I just had, I've just got an open mind. So if someone says be somewhere, just look at something else. I was going, it seemed pretty, I guess, you know, we're trying to fix the depot as best we could. And an option of, you know, let's look at this workshop came across. And I had a look and I asked Paul, the subject matter expert, because I trust Paul's opinion. He came back to me with maybe the details in those emails, if you've got a copy of them. And Paul said, yeah, it's not, it's not for us. And I didn't really revisit it after that, to be honest. I believe I was asked by either the mayor or the CEO, the acting CEO. And I just said, it's not, not for us. And surely after that, I was gone. There was no discussion of purchasing the site. That was a bit of a shock when I came back, to be honest.
So at the time that you went there, purchasing it wasn't on the radar? It was a?
No, no, it wasn't. I was just, it's as simple as how I'm trying to explain it. I was asked to go there. We had a look. I believe Paul said to me, well, it's not really connected to the depots and, you know, it's not really a secure site. So I believe those were the two main things. And yeah, we didn't really revisit the conversation. You know, councillors come to directors all the time with ideas or something. It's not uncommon for that to occur. But yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. Like, my focus, like, I did a lot of renovations to Rose Street. I know that's not what you're asking for, but I was trying to make the depot a little bit better. It was pretty rundown. I did what I could as the director in that short period of time to try and fix some buildings and paint some things that needed to be painted and get some furniture for the staff and update the lunchrooms, you know, like I was just trying to help brighten up the place a little bit. The workshop was a point of contention for, during that period, I believe there were some promotional videos by our councillors saying, you know, they're going to help fix the place up. I think it was genuine. I believe they wanted to help us, you know, help the depot become a better, better place. And yeah, just, that's where it is, so.
All right. So you go on leave, you come back. And when you arrive back, Cow Past, six hundred Cow Pasture Road has been purchased.
Yes.
And in the position that you moved to, you were given responsibility for six hundred Cow Pasture Road? And when you say responsibility for it, at that point, when you arrived back, what was anticipated? Or what were you told that Cow Pasture Road was going to be used for at that point? Not as how it may have developed subsequently, but what you can recall at that point?
Just for my benefit, what time period are we talking?
I'm sorry, this is, I think, around November, December, twenty twenty two?
Okay, thank you.
And sorry, I should have corrected that. You were given responsibility for Cow Pasture Road after you returned, but when I suggested about December twenty twenty two, is that correct? Or would it be sometime in twenty twenty three?
Somewhere in that period. Yeah, you'd have to look through the records.
Late twenty two, early twenty three, about there.
Yeah.
Right. So, and giving you responsibility for Cow Pasture Road, that was done by whoever the director of operations was at that point?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Well, you come back. You're not in your substantive position. You've been put to a projects type role. And as part of your project type role, you've given evidence that you were given responsibility for six hundred Cow Pasture Road? Who said to you in your project role, you're now to look after six hundred Cow Pasture Road?
Yeah, so I, the director at the time, to be honest, I can't recall the exact conversation, but I know, I know there was a bit of fuss internally in council at the time, who should take control of this project? I think it was a meeting that took place with our infrastructure team and project delivery team. And no one had capacity or time to deal with it. So I believe I put my hand up and I just said, look, we've got this site now, so we have to, we'll have to carry out the resolutions that council put forward, I believe, in a confidential report. That was, I don't know if I can talk about it, but yeah, there was a confidential report that decided that, you know, that this site, I believe, had to be purchased. And the intent of this site was a waste facility.
I'm sorry, can you, I am having difficulties hearing you.
Yeah.
So you refer to a.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. We're going to try a two-pronged approach. We're going to try and turn the volume up in the room, but there is a limit before it starts to interfere with the microphone.
Try this microphone instead.
Perhaps if, because if we lean too close to them, we get a little bit of that, I don't know what that noise is, but that noise, if you just perhaps raise your voice in your normal seating position, we'll turn the speaker up a little bit, and hopefully that'll get us to a nice equilibrium. But if someone asks you to repeat something, you'll speak up. It's not a criticism. We just have to make sure we get it all down.
Sure.
Thank you.
Now, you've just given evidence that you put up your hand and that you said something along the lines of there was a resolution, a confidential report to council where then there was the decision to purchase this site. Is that correct?
Correct.
The, is your, sorry, I'll start again. Have you seen this confidential report?
I only cited it once or twice, but I wasn't, I don't actually have delegated authority to actually delve into the actual reporting info, council. That's our system. Can you hear me? Or is it, is it better?
A little bit, a little bit louder, if you wouldn't mind.
So I have, I have cited it once before and I can't, can't remember the specifics of it. But I know that, I know that there was a resolution in some extraordinary meeting to purchase this site and to use the, I believe, the waste levy and to dip into the reserve essentially. And when I asked my team when I returned, they didn't have any involvement, from my understanding, in the creation of that report. Because as you'd imagine, if you, it'd be, if you're buying a waste facility, you'd think that you'd talk to your, the strategic waste team for input. Maybe some of our strategies or something we used, but yeah, we had no involvement.
Do you remember the title of this confidential report?
No, but I believe it was in August. And it was the only report in that extraordinary meeting.
If I can just ask you some questions about basic council meeting. We've heard evidence that when a matter arises which can be described as commercial in confidence, the council can move to a closed session. And in that closed session, they can consider confidential reports. When you talk about a confidential report, is that the procedure that you're speaking about? There's a matter before council that is commercial in confidence. They move to a closed session, they consider a report. And then they come back into open session and either pass or reject a resolution which usually is in rather bland terms?
Yes.
So your understanding is that there was this report, confidential report that council reviewed or discussed, debated in a closed session? You have, you've used the word cited it. When you say cited it, does that mean I look, I've just seen it and saw the title? Or I had an opportunity to read it in a quick way, or I had an opportunity to read it in detail?
Oh, look, I had, I read, I read the report at the time that I saw it, because I wanted to understand what, what was in front of us and what we had to do with this site. Yeah, so it was a depot, a new depot that was focused on waste. So it was in my best interest to know what exactly we were going to do with this particular site. So.
What is your recollection of when you read through the report?
I recall, you know, some of our reports, potentially, like, just being, like, someone's read some of our documents and collated this report. Yeah, there was something, some elements, you know, like the mattress shredder. There were some things that were drawn from our strategy, I believe. You know, bits of information from our team to form the report. I recall that there were a number of.
Can I just pause you? I did ask roughly when you read the report?
Oh, I think when I came back, to be honest. No, probably early twenty twenty three, I think.
So again, if we say early twenty twenty three?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
I want to just ask you some questions about terminology to assist us. We've heard use of the word depot. And you've described some of the functions at Rose Street, that it houses council equipment. Does a depot also have some kind of mechanical workshop? Does a depot also have some kind of mechanical workshop facilities? Or is that kind of optional?
No, most councils have a, you know, a mechanical workshop of some sort in the, in the depot environment. Yeah, it's pretty common, yes.
And, and I know where I'm asking questions at a general level, but a depot is usually to house equipment and with some kind of workshop facility attached.
Correct. It depends on the size of the council. But for a council the size of Liverpool, yes. Yep.
You've now spoken about, there appears to be from this report, a focus on it, on six hundred Cow Pasture Road being a waste facility. When you use the terminology waste facility, what does that, what would you see that facility including?
Um, well, planning approvals, that you can actually conduct, you know, waste activities on the site, for starters. In the case of Cow Pasture Road, you know, there was, there was a vision in this document for what Cow Pasture Road was, was to be.
Right, I'm just interested at the moment in working out terminology.
Yeah.
So a waste facility means that you can cut, that it has the ability to conduct waste activity on the site.
Correct, like bring waste to the site, the sorting or processing or, or disposal. Not, not in the case of Cow Pasture, it's not a landfill, but there was an intent. Like, you know, that, that's what the intent of the facility was. It's a waste facility for like a community recycling centre, like what we have at Rose Street. You know, the mattress shredder was ultimately go there too. As per the document. That's, yeah, like, that's, that's pretty much it, just anything to do with waste. Does that answer your question or?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, so Rose Street, although a depot, also has, um, some waste facilities on it.
Correct, yes.
And without going to the mattress shredder at the moment, that involves some kind of recycling or sorting facility?
Uh, yes, so we have a community recycling centre at Rose Street.
Is that where people can take electronics, TVs, gas bottles and the like?
Correct, there's thirteen waste streams that that facility collects, polystyrene and some of the items that you mentioned.
Um, now, your evidence is that either late or early twenty twenty, sorry, late twenty twenty two, early twenty twenty three, you're given the task of looking after Cow Pasture Road. You look at this, you've described it as a confidential report that was before council. Can I just ask, you, you said, I don't have the delegated authority to delve into this report. You remember saying that?
Yeah.
What did you mean by that?
Um, so if I click into our system, Info Council, uh, if I double click on that report, it says I'm not authorized to view the report.
And that's because your role as manager circular economy doesn't have the authority to.
Correct.
Um, so your, the, the one time that you read it, were you handed a, a paper copy or something like that to have a look?
Uh, I believe it was an email from, from the CFO with my direct report copied in.
And sorry, the CFO?
Uh, yeah, the Chief Financial Officer.
So your recollection is Chief Financial Officer sent you the report as an attachment with, uh, the either director or acting director copied in?
He, he, yes.
Do you remember who the CFO was at that time?
We've had the same CFO, so yes.
That's Mr Nadam?
Correct, yes.
You may not be able to answer this, but do you know why Mr Nadam forwarded it to you?
Um, I, I called him up, I believe, and just wanted to understand what we had been handed. And, um, I wanted to know a bit, bit more, like, you know, you can't go into this blind, right? So, um, yeah, I'd, I'd returned, we had this facility and we had to do something with it and there were some actions in that report that I needed to be aware of.
I'm, I have no problem with that. I'm just, what I'm asking you is why the Chief Financial Officer, who's in a different division, corporate support or whatever it was called, why you made the inquiry of him and not just your CEO? Can you see what I'm asking?
Yeah, I can't, I can't recall, but, um, probably that time of the year, we talk finance anyway, because we set the budgets. So it, it probably came up casually in conversation to begin with. Um, but I can't recall the exact conversation, I'm just, you know, lots happened, um, from then and now, so. Is there anything specific that you want to know about that or?
I was just curious as to why, um, the Chief Financial Officer would be sending you a report dealing with what was to happen with six hundred Cow Pasture Road.
Yeah.
Um, can I maybe raise this, and this is a topic we were going to come to? Has there been since the purchase of six hundred Cow Pasture Road, a decision about the utilization of, um, particular waste rates that are obtained and their use?
Was there a conversation about the rates and their use?
No.
Sorry.
Look, sorry, I'll withdraw that, I'll come to that at the relevant time. Um, so you were sent by the CFO a copy of this report as an attachment. After you had read it, were you required to return it or destroy it or?
Uh, not, not to my recollection, it was just handed to me, um, so.
I'm just wondering, given that, that you had it as an attachment, why you said I only read it once?
Well, I, I wanted to know what was in it, so I, I read it, yeah.
But you had the opportunity to reread it, sure?
I, I, I can, yes, so.
But you've only read it once?
I've read it once, yes, and I, you know, maybe, maybe there's a way to audit the clicks on my computer or something. And, um, may, maybe I'll read it again, I'm not sure, but, yeah.
And it's your evidence that in this report, there is a reference to the land being used as a waste facility?
I, I believe so, yes.
And it is your recol, I'm sorry, withdraw that. The mattress shredding equipment, is it your recollection that it was referred to in that report?
Correct, yes.
Right, rise to my feet, yeah, to take care in relation to the content of that report, because there has been an application in relation to it, but I think.
Okay. Something we need to deal with.
I don't think so.
All right, well, just remember, if we get into territory you consider dangerous, you'll let me know.
Yes, as I say, it's, it's the content of the report rather than the fact of it.
Yes.
Um, it is subject already to a non-publication order. So it would be a matter of, um, we won't live stream it if at any time it needs to be shown to a witness.
You content with that?
I'm content with that and just to the extent that anything to date, um, has disclosed anything in the content. Just really, I'm saying this for the benefit of anyone watching.
Yes.
You, Commissioner, I'm told, have already made an order about the non-publication of the contents of that document, as I understand.
I have, but if you want me to do anything in particular about the transcript or the evidence that's already out.
I simply wanted, well, I want to have vocalized that in a public, in, in, in the public forum, so that anyone watching understands.
Thank you.
I'm grateful to the commission.
Could I just have the doc ID of the document?
More a little, we're just trying to work out which one it is.
Oh, I see.
Um, there are two that, excuse me, there are non-publication orders. There's one which is, um, refers to a ninth of August meeting, which is O L G dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one three nine two.
Yeah.
Excuse me for a minute. And then there is another report which is dated November, which is L C C dash zero zero four dash zero zero five dash one seven oh three.
Thank you.
I just want to go off on a bit of a tangent at the moment and get you to or ask you to assist in working out location of different sites?
Yeah.
And for that purpose, this may be a bit of a challenge at the moment for the live streaming, but can I hand you this?
You don't need to do that in future, someone will get it for you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Doing our associate out.
I'm a fan of efficiency.
Sorry.
Do you want it back?
Yeah.
Sit back, that's nice, yeah.
It's administration which I'm not that proficient at. Could you just excuse me, the bundle, all right? Associate, can I hand you this bundle? Yeah, I've got a bundle, I've got a bundle there. And also we'll hand one to the commissioner.
Thank you.
Look, that might assist in some way. The particular page that I want to take the witness to is I N Q dot zero three five dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one.
And just confirming it's okay to go on the live stream?
Yes, it is. Now, looking at the map, you can identify assets titled. Um, it's the suburbs within the Liverpool local government area, correct?
Correct.
I want you to identify three particular areas. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to hand you three fluorescent pens with pink. Uh, can you indicate where Cow Past, six hundred Cow Pasture Road is?
In a general sense.
Yeah.
We can't be pinpoint accurate.
Yeah, sorry, without being able to zoom in.
We can zoom it in.
Yep. It's, it's near the M seven, just, you know, with that, I believe, the pink kind of near Green Valley.
So in the, in the, I think council assisting is suggesting in the hard copy that's in front of you with the pink highlighter, you just put it across, close to where you, where you think it is, that'd be fantastic.
Probably gonna stuff this up, to be honest, but it's around there for me. Can I do a big circle that?
Of course.
That would be great.
Yeah, around there.
Now, before I ask to look at this and then we'll go back and seek to get you to identify it for the live streaming.
Yeah.
With your green fluorescent pen.
Yeah.
Would you indicate the depot that you referred to earlier at Devonshire, I think it was Road?
If it was Google Maps, I can pinpoint the actual street in the satellite view, but I believe it's next to where Austral is, like those roads there, so.
And then with the final blue fluorescent pen.
Yeah.
Would you mark where the Northern Road is?
Just along the whole road.
Northern Road or the?
The Northern Road.
Northern Road.
Yep, so like from London and all the way down the Northern.
Ah, so you followed the road through with your blue fluorescent, the blue fluorescent pen?
Is that what you wanted or?
Yep, cool. Terrific. All right, could I just retrieve that to have a look at?
Hopefully I passed.
Commissioner, if I can do this, just hand round this.
Course.
To council. I'll hand this back to you. An additional question. And may I retrieve that again? With the map that's, um, now on the screen, again, very roughly, the purple part of the circle intersected. part of the circle intersected where Green Valley is referred to. Then if you then move along to Austral, where the word Austral appears, you put a green circle next to it, and that was to indicate Devonshire Road.
Yes.
And then if you keep on going to the left of the document and you see the road that starts up at Luton.
Yep.
And then you can trace it down the page to where about Smeaton Grange. That's
Or the right.
Western Road.
Yeah.
Excuse me for a minute. Commissioner, I tender, excuse me for a minute. Commissioner, I'll hand up the marked copy at the moment for sure if you've been kept out of the loop at the moment.
Alright, I've been following.
For it, but at the moment, can I tender document inq-035-001-0001 as marked by Mr. Paisley?
That will be the bit twenty? Is it just the, just the one?
Yes, the marked.
Do you want to, are you going to be dealing with any of the other maps?
Eventually, but not necessarily with Mr. Paisley.
Do you want to mark them, the bundle as an MFI or?
Um, that makes sense, so. It's eighteen pages and if I can indent, excuse me for a minute. If the MFI could note that it's a bundle of, I'll describe them as maps, commence of eighteen pages commencing with inq.035.001.0001 unmarked and finishing with the document inq-035.001.00001_0018.
That bundle will be MFI eleven. And I'll return to Madam Associate the bit so I don't lose it. These can be made.
Commissioner, is that an appropriate time?
Yes, we're just going to take the morning adjournment. So we'll start again at ten to twelve, if you wouldn't mind just being ready to go a couple of minutes before that.
Okay.
In the meantime, feel free to stretch your legs and get some refreshment. We'll see you back then. I'll adjourn until ten to twelve.
Mr Paisley, I want to take you back now to the document that was emailed to you as an attachment by Mr Nadan. And this is when you had returned to your work at the council and you had been given in your role, the responsibility for Cow Pasture Roadside. Now, can we bring up document LCC-004-005.1703? Now, this is subject to a non-publication order, so we cannot live stream it. Now, this has some pages to begin with which deal with legal issues about the actual purchase of the property. I don't know if that was forwarded to you, but our understanding of the report, it commences at page underscore 0007. And Miss Associate, what we might do is just scroll through it so Mr Paisley can have a look. We'll stop there. Mr Paisley, we were scrolling through that rather quickly. The intention was not for you in some miraculous manner to speed read that document as it was coming through the screen. It was rather for you to see what was contained in the report. And I hope looking at that could then confirm that that was the confidential report that you were given access to.
Yes.
Now, I wanted to take you just to two sections at the moment. Can I just preface it by if at any time in answering any question, you would like to look at more detail at the report, just say so and we can bring it up or focus on whichever page you wanted to have a look at. But the first section I wanted to take you to was page underscore 0008. Now, and it's at the beginning of the page, the paragraph that commences, "Given the intended use of the property and waste associated function, the proposal is to..." Then there's three dot points. "Use up to $5 million from the, from council current DWM reserves."
Yep.
"Borrow up to $32.7 million, increase DWM levies to cover full cost of servicing loan."
Yep.
Now, the reference to DWM, what's that a reference to?
It's domestic waste management. I think in the legislation it's DWMC, Domestic Waste Management Charge. So, section 496 and 504, Local Government Act.
And in summary, are they charges that can be imposed on rate payers, but they're identified for a particular use? And then the legislation, which you very usefully just identified, then imposes an external restriction on the use that the council can make with those, those amounts?
Yeah, so it's restricted funding for the purposes of waste management. So, from when we collect the waste to where we responsibly get rid of it or recreate it into something else.
The reference in the first dot point to current DWM reserves, what's your understanding of what that's referring to?
So, when it comes to managing the finances of waste, you, you take an estimation on how much waste you're going to generate in a year. Any money that we tend to save would go into a reserve at the end of the financial year and that reserve accumulates over time. The reserve can build up with other ways as well. So, many, many years ago before the China Sword Policy in 2018, I believe, we used to actually generate income from recycling bin. So, any kind of an income that was created from the recycling bin would end up in that reserve, which would be reinvested back into waste when required.
So, your understanding, that first dot point is that this is intended to be that reinvestment into a facility dealing with waste recycling?
Yes.
The next point is borrowing some funds. The last dot point, increase the domestic waste management levy to cover full cost of servicing the loan. The DWM levy, is that referring to what is imposed on rate payers every year?
Yes, so you can see it on the rates notice. So, you have general, the general funds or the general rates. And then you've got a separate line item for the domestic waste management charge. I believe we have other levies as well, but I don't recall what those are deliverable.
And what is anticipated here is that there would be an increase in that levy and the amount that it's been increased would then be used to paying interest stroke capital off the loan.
That's how I'm seeing it, yes.
Could I just pause for a minute? Could I ask you to speak up a little bit? And could I just inquire of council down that end? It's better, right? Thank you. Still in this document, would you then, could we move to page 0010? I'm focusing on the paragraph before site details. And there it has measurables for recycling and waste diversion from landfill would be achieved by the operation of a mattress shredding recycling operation from the proposed site, noting currently approximately 20,000 mattresses per annum in the Liverpool LGA are sent to waste. Now, the mattress shredding recycling operation, before it was before it was introduced within the Liverpool gov, uh, local government area, if a rate payer wanted to dispose of a mattress, was it part of, I think you described it as the bulk?
Uh, no, so bulky waste collection is separate. So some councils tend to throw the mattresses in that bulky waste collection. We had a separate service for mattress collection. So that was accomplished by a contractor initially, my first came.
Yep. So you had, before the mattress recycling operation was introduced, council had a contract with an outside firm who would come and collect mattresses and take them away.
Correct, yes.
Now, this mattress shredding recycle, recycling operation, I'm going to ask you some more questions in detail about it, but currently is it being operated by two machines which are known as the Crocs?
Yes, that's correct.
What we may do at this point, Commissioner, and I'm sorry if we can, oh, that's not being livestreamed, is it? But we can pull that down. And I wish to pay, play, I'm sorry, a video from TikTok, which is a, a video of the operation of the Crocs.
Excellent.
Which I know you've been hanging out. And it is INQ dot zero two five dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one. Could I just ask Ms Associate, do we need to move to a separate system to play that? Yes. Thanks. Just before we hit play, can that be expanded in any way?
Whilst that's happening, could I just have that number again? The doc ID? Oh, it's there on the screen, I can see it, thank you.
Hi everyone, very exciting news. What you see behind me is our new CROC mattress shredding machine. This machine, it's good for the environment because the material inside of it will be recycled, the steel will get recycled, but also all the fluffy stuff in the mattress will get turned into pavers, tiles, kitchen bench tops. And that's going to happen at our new recycling centre on 600 Cow Pasture Road.
So fantastic day for Liverpool City Council. We've got nine city councils here today from as far as North Sydney and Randwick, all looking at what we're doing with mattress shredding. Really, really proud of the team that have got the mattress shredder in operations as we speak. And this is just stage one of Liverpool solving Sydney's waste problem.
Absolutely any opportunity to, to, to improve landfill diversion and, and the circular economy, Randwick are always looking for those opportunities.
Look, we're really excited to be partnering with council on this initiative. Our green ceramics product invented by the University of New South Wales is innovative, it uses waste textiles and waste glass that would otherwise go to landfill in terms of being highly engineered, highly desirable products. For us to be turning mattresses into fantastic products like that, it's a great opportunity.
We need to make sure that we push and get recycled as much as possible. This will save money, not only for you, but for other residents in other LGAs. If those councils are there bringing their mattresses to us, it will save you money and save their money. So it's a win-win for the environment, it's a win for your pocket, and it's a win for everybody.
Mr Paisley, I think you were featured in the video at one stage? That's correct?
I was smiling.
Um, my next question is.
Everybody was in that video.
Yes.
Even the mascot.
Well, that was going to lead to my next question. Is it part of your job description to be the mascot or?
You, you have to be six feet tall to fit into the suit.
Might have been Mr Parish.
Yeah. Now, before I forget, I tender that video being.
Yes.
Item INQ dot zero two five dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one.
Exhibit twenty one.
The video featured, and I'm just going to use the description, CROC. Was the CROC, was, I'm sorry, I'll start again, the CROC at that was, that was depicted, was it Rose Street?
Correct, yes.
And at that point, was there only one CROC?
I, I can't recall when the second one came. I think it was around probably a few months after that. Yep.
And as the video depicted, the, one of the advantages of the CROC is that it allows the recycling of all aspects of a mattress.
Uh, so the CROC is a processing unit, so you process the waste, they're from raw waste and it separates the material into two resource streams, so metal and flock. At the moment, majority of the flock is being converted into a, am I talking loud enough? Yeah, sorry. Majority of the flock is actually being turned into a, a material called process engineered fuel, so PEF. That's how we're getting the 96% diversion rate. So if you recall what I said before, with the waste and sustainable materials strategy, every council has to try and achieve 80% diversion across all waste streams. So we accomplished that on the, on the CROC. So our process engineered fuel, for your records, is a fuel source for match, uh, cement kilns, so like Boral, and they, they use it as a fuel source to run those kilns. Um, so that's where we're sending it at the moment. Yep.
The steel, so as you said, it, in a sense, you have the, it's called flock?
Flock, yes.
And then you have the steel, what's happening with the steel?
It, it goes to a metal recycler, a local one.
And is there any waste byproduct at all left?
Uh, the four percent is usually like contamination. So if, if they're going through the, the flock and there might be some trace elements of metal.
Yes.
And sometimes you get small amounts, they might just reject that, that portion. Not all mattresses are in the best condition too, so we might get one that's been sitting in a park for a very long time. So we, we don't really want to mix that with the rest of the flock. So we, we try and extract the metal out of that, but we might not put the flock into that PEF product.
And can I just confirm with the flock, that is predominantly being used as PEP?
PEF, P E F, process engineered fuel.
And as you said, that it, it's then being sold to entities, for example, like Boral?
Uh, we, we don't sell it to them, we actually pay disposal fee to get rid of the flock. And then it's up to the company that we, we deal with to, they, they do a bit of further refinement and then they sell it as a product.
And your understanding is after that refinement, it's then being sold to, for example, Boral or?
Correct, yes. Sometimes they export it overseas too, so we don't have that capability in council to do that.
Now, there was also a reference on the video to the production of tiles and I think is also coffee tables.
Yep.
Is that another possible byproduct from the flock?
Correct. So, you know, we're working with UNSW, we've got a agreement that's only just recently established itself to conduct world leading research and science. We have PhD students, well, the intent is to have PhD students come to the site and work on this science. And these are people from our community, gives them an opportunity. UNSW won't award people a PhD, so change the criteria unless they provide something tangible to the community or the industry. So this is a really good opportunity to, to connect, you know.
Now, this University of New South Wales research.
Yep.
Are they currently located at 600 Cow Pasture Road?
No, they're not, but they do, that, we do have a, an agreement that just recently passed where that the students could come to 600 Cow Pasture Road.
And do what?
Uh, conduct their research. So in, in, to green hybrids, so that's the proposed, I don't know if I can share that, that's the university commercial incompetence thing, so it hasn't come to fruition yet.
Now, I want to go backwards and take you to a document which is LCC dash zero zero four dash zero two zero dash nine seven nine seven, which is entitled Draft Mattress Processing Facility Business Plan, Liverpool City Council. And if, before we live stream it, if that can be livestreamed. Yes, LCC dash zero zero four dash zero twenty two zero dash, uh, dot, I'm sorry, nine seven nine seven. That's the first page of the document.
Yep.
Have you seen this draft report before?
Yes, I have.
It is entitled draft, to your knowledge was ever a final report produced.
Not to my knowledge.
And this was produced by an outside organisation for the council?
Correct, I engaged a consulting firm. Yep.
You engaged?
I believe I engaged them, yes.
And this was around March 2022?
Correct.
And this is a draft business case for the mattress facility?
Uh, yes, it is, but we had the initial approval in a, in our waste strategy at the end of 2021.
Sorry, can you just repeat that? You had the initial?
We had initial approval in our waste strategy, from my understanding. Uh, at the end of 2021, there was a mention of the mattress recycling, like shredder.
Thank you.
Waste management and sustainable materials strategy of 2031, 2021 to 2031.
Thank you.
In particular in this report, I want to take you to section seven, which is entitled Location and Site Analysis. That commences at page underscore zero zero one nine. In this part of the report, as you can see in the first paragraph under section seven, the report opines that the council will need to find suitable land to establish the mattress shredding facility based on the following, sufficient space for the building and operation, appropriate zoning of land to be, to be able to establish the operation and land to be owned by council. Correct?
Yes.
It then examines two properties owned by the council. The first one is one at the corner of Ash Road and Jeddah Road, Preston's. The second one, if we can go to the next page, lowest score zero zero two zero. It's a reference to the council's Western Depot.
Yep.
And it's identified as the Devonshire Road. That was the depot that you identified very early in your evidence as being one of the depot stroke land sites owned by council and available for the council.
Correct, yes.
And and if we look at this part of the report, there's an aerial photograph of the site and then the two paragraphs immediately underneath that confirm that there's sufficient area for the shredding of the mattresses. Though they note part of the land is currently being used by the council or other operations and the land will also need to be cleared of contaminants. Where it refers to contaminants, what's it referring to there? Do you know?
Yes, I do. I don't know if, can I say it because it might devalue the land?
Excuse me.
A minute.
Commissioner, I do press the question and I'd like the, obviously like the answer. My, my learned friend has a concern, at the moment, can we cut the live streaming?
What, what's the, is it the one raised by the witness?
That's right. The, the, the position is this, I don't have any instructions on this, save that, I'm grateful to the witness for drawing attention to it. It may be that what the witness says would affect the value of the land, it's not hard to see how that might be the case.
Yeah.
And if that's, so for the time being, if Commissioner, you would make an idea or order under section twelve B.
To go into private session and a non-publication.
And, and, and I can take some instructions.
I think that's probably right, Ms McDonald.
Yes, no?
All right. And everybody who is in the room can remain, I take it? We might just shut the door. Not that I expect someone to come down the corridor, but just in case. Pursuant to section twelve, capital B of the Royal Commissions Act, I direct that this next passage of evidence be taken in private. I also direct that the transcript of that private session not be published otherwise than to the legal representatives of the authorised parties, the chief executive officer of the council and the general counsellor and deputy general counsellor of the council. Is that, have I got that bit right, Mr?
Yes.
We can adjust the, we can adjust the order.
Yeah, it's, it's a very minor matter, technically, I, I've, and, and the, 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 the role I've been describing as deputy general counsellor, it's acting deputy general counsellor is the, that is, is the formal title, I can take that up with.
Okay, all right.
One of those assisting you.
Either the acting or the incumbent deputy general counsellor. All right, we'll go into private session, thank you. Just. Uh, all right, we'll go into private session. Thank you. Just. All right, we'll back into, uh, public session and Miss McDonald will ask the next question.
I'm taking you back to this part of the Draft Mattress Processing Facility Business Plan.
Hmm.
And the section which is looking at, um, potential sites.
Yep.
And we were looking at the Devonshire Road site, um. And you've given evidence that you had a discussion with the, um, report writers.
Yeah.
Pro lead plus about, um, the Western Depot at Devonshire Road.
Hmm.
Uh, independently to that discussion with them, had you produced any report? Uh, either internally with councils to council itself looking at issues or problems with the Devonshire Road Depot?
No, not that I recall. And I, I believe this business case, just wanted to make it clear. I actually think it's a lot earlier than the date that's on, on there when we, when we conducted this, because obviously you've got the timeline. Cow Pasture Road's not in this report, so it's obvious. It was before, uh, Pasture Road, um, was acquired.
Well, Cow Pasture Road was hired, say, August to November twenty twenty two, so it does predate
Hmm.
that per, the purchase by the council, really the council looking at purchasing that property.
Hmm.
So does that change your evidence about?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just trying to recall this thing. So we obviously worked on this business plan, like, we worked on this business plan way before then. I, I, I believe it was s- straight after the, um, strategy was endorsed. Um, we, we'd have to, I'd have to talk to the consultant and find the actual days we engaged in. But I believe it predates the purchase of Cow Pasture Road, because Cow Pasture Road would have been in this report.
But it does predate the purchase of Cow Pasture Road. As I said.
Yeah.
Cow Pasture Road, um, was purchased around November twenty twenty two. This is dated March.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty two.
Is it twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three? I thought I saw.
Could we just go back to, uh, page nine seven nine seven?
Okay, sorry, I, I thought I saw twenty twenty three there.
That's right, yeah.
All right. I was like, whoa.
So that makes sense timewise now?
Yeah, 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 definitely.
Uh, is Devonshire Road Depot still used by the council?
Uh, yes, it, it is.
What for?
Uh, I believe, uh, civil works operate out of there, so the, the teams that, um, build, you know, widen the roads, um, because obviously there's a lot of development going out west. So, um, they're, they're stationed there because it makes sense proximity wise to. I don't look after that department, but that's my understanding of it, yes.
Now, and the issues that you ro- raised or discussed during the closed session, I don't want you to go to, to detail about that. That doesn't affect the operation of the site for the civil work? Or is that outside your area of, um, responsibility?
It's outside of my area of responsibility, yes.
Now, excuse me for a minute. You spoke about, in the lead up to this report, um, being prepared at looking at alternative sites to save costs. Do you recall that? I'm just asking you first, do you recall giving that evidence?
Saying that I was looking at alternative sites. This, this was all internal.
Yeah, but just save costs.
Um, y- yeah, well, that's, that's what, I'm a procurement person, so I'm always going to look at va- value for money. It's always, it's in the, the DNA, my thinking, yeah.
And so that's what you're talking about with saving costs, trying not to incur additional debt for the council in trying to find an alternative site that the council already owns.
I was, I was trying to run this thing very lean, to be honest, so.
You were trying to what?
Run the operation very lean, so low overhead, so I was trying to keep the costs down low to justify going down this path. Um, because obviously we were paying a contractor a significant amount of money until we took over mattresses for ourselves. Sorry, am I talking loud enough or?
No.
Okay, yeah.
Excuse me for a minute. And when you spoke about trying to have a, a lean operation, are you referring to if it, um, is approved by council, the lean operation of the actual mattress shredding operation?
Yeah, like, as little staff as possible will be able to get same outcome the contractor was.
So cut back basically on your costs?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, now, could we go back to, excuse me for a minute?
Madam Associate.
I want to take you back to exhibit twenty, which was the map that you marked this morning. I don't think it's been scanned yet, so I'll have to give you the, um, your marked version. But identifying Rose Street, do you move, and this is a very rough direction. From Rose Street, you move out to the west to Cow Pasture Road? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Then you move out further to the west to the Devonshire Road Depot? Correct?
What, so what, what about it? Like, we're, we're showing the locations of these sites? Is that what you're?
No, I'm asking you questions.
Yeah.
The, and this, the last question I asked you, moving from Cow, from, um.
Rose Street.
Rose Street to Cow Pasture Road.
Yeah.
You're moving in roughly a westerly direction?
Correct, yes.
And then from Cow Pasture Road out to Devonshire Road Depot, again roughly a western?
Correct, yeah.
And then again, from Devonshire Street.
Yep.
Out to the Northern Road, again, we're moving in a western, westerly, roughly westerly direction?
Yeah.
That's correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right, could you just keep that with you for one moment? And can we return to, yes, the draft business plan? And can we move to page zero zero two two? Now, if you need context, please tell me, but this is still under that section seven, which is looking at location and site analysis. See that? We can go back to, it starts at zero zero one nine. Right?
Okay.
And we just very quickly scroll through. We're under section seven point four land acquisition, and if you would then go through to zero zero two two. You can see the last paragraph, suitable land west of Northern Road exists that can be acquired by council for the self purpose of waste management and resource recovery precinct.
Yeah.
The land will also serve as a location for any, uh, innovative waste management and will be closer to growth areas near the Western Sydney Airport. Do you see that?
Yeah, so.
Now, the, um, that is the recommendation that's contained in the report.
Yep.
Cow Pasture Road, um, does not meet the description of the land suggested in that paragraph.
You're correct, yes.
Um, it's not land to the west of Northern, of Northern Road?
It is actually, so this is a completely different project now we're talking about, and it's extremely commercial incompetence.
Well, hold on, stop for a sec. If we can just take it in stages. You agree that the Cow Pasture Road property does not meet the description set out in that paragraph?
I, I am going to rise to my feet here.
Hang on, hang on, is, is there a problem with that particular question?
I don't know, because I don't know the nature and extent of the commercial incompetence. Um, if it relates to that paragraph, the answer is possible.
I understood the question to be, is Cow Pasture Road suitable land west of Northern Road? Is that the import of the question?
Sorry, yes, Commissioner.
I- i- if we go further, I understand there might be a problem, but is there a problem with that question?
As I say, if, if, if that paragraph does not form part of the commercial incompetence that Mr. Pasley just referred to, there's not, there's not a difficulty with it. I don't know whether that paragraph forms part of the matter, but. That's, that's.
Perhaps, perhaps ask the particular question again and we'll see. We can narrow it to the mere issue of location and then we'll go one step at a time.
Taking it step by step, um, the Cow Pasture Road property.
Yep.
In terms of its location, does not meet the description of suggested suitable land in that paragraph of the report on mattress processing facility.
I, I am concerned about that because, and again, I don't know whether the, it's the suitability that causes. If, if, if the question is, is it east or west of a particular road, that question can be asked and answered undoubtedly. I, 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 this, this is a document over which, um, the, 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 um, the, 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 um, no, no, I'm sorry, yeah, so, so as I say, that's the, the, the fear I've got is because Mr. Pasley has adverted to a commercial incompetence, the details of which I don't know. Of course, I don't want to ask him on the fly in a hearing what, what that's about. We could do that in closed session, but that may be a le- a, a level of complexity that is unnecessary if the question is one of physical location of the land.
Um, Cow Pasture Road is not west of Northern Road, correct?
Correct.
To your knowledge, after the production of this report, draft report to council, was there any investigation of suitable land west of Northern Road?
Uh, yes, so there's a, um, it's some work that we did with a company called Arcadis.
Can you give me the company's name again?
Arcadis.
Did you commission this work by Arcadis?
Yes.
When did you do that?
Can't recall the specific dates. Can't recall the specific dates, but there was a study done into a particular piece of land.
That study by Arcadis that you commissioned, was it prepared after you returned to work at council after your three months leave?
I think so, to the best of my knowledge.
So it was commissioned after the purchase of 600 Cow Pasture Road?
The study, yes, but I had an idea prior to Cow Pasture.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So, so if you look at our.
No, 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 just answer my question.
Yeah.
The first question is, so that study.
Yeah.
Was you commissioned it after the purchase of 600 Cow Pasture Road, is that correct?
That study, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Had you, you've spoken about a study into a particular piece of land. Have you engaged Arcadis to do other work broadly in the area of looking at suitable areas of land?
No.
So your involvement with Arcadis, commissioning them to undertake a study, was done after you returned to work at the council after your leave?
Yes, I believe so.
And again, if I'm going to move into something that you think's confidential, please exercise caution beforehand. Would you identify what piece of land was that this study looked at?
So we knew a piece of land in a smaller form from a previous report that was done by WestROC. So that's the Western Sydney Regional Association of Councils, I believe.
Yep.
So we just simply expanded what was in that report to look into this site further. And in our strategy, there's reference to the idea of that, but we just weren't clear until this report was created.
So I take it you've been cautious because you don't want to identify the site?
I can tell you the significance of it, but not publicly, because.
Could you, Madam Associate, give the witness a piece of paper and a pen and you can just write down the site and then hand it to Ms. McDonald and she can then determine what to do next?
It's, it's not a address, it's a region.
Okay, well.
I can draw it on the map, but you have to.
My attempt to help has failed spectacularly. I'll stop, I'll stop trying, just pause for a moment.
Yeah.
If I can just ask some general questions so I get, try and get this clear in my mind. Arcadis, you commissioned them to undertake a study into, your evidence was a particular piece of land, correct?
Correct, yes.
Are you now saying that particular piece of land is actually a region?
Yes.
Is it a region within the Liverpool City Council area?
I, I, I am going to object, again, I don't know the level of sensitivity. And if we're going to start sort of zeroing in on something which, which, I, I just don't know whether this is going to disclose it or not.
I understand.
Maybe the easiest thing is to go into private session. Questions can be asked fully and it may be that all of it or much of it can then be released.
I think that's as, as, focused as I am, as I think I should be, on doing much of this in public as I can. I do understand that there might be some inadvertent disclosure of matters that could properly be the subject of it or be order. I think, Ms. McDonald, it might also be more efficient if we go into private with a, unless you don't want to pursue it any further.
I do want to pursue it further, but I think there are some questions that I can ask arising from a publicly available document.
Okay.
That might.
Shortcut it.
Shortcut it and let us understand.
All right.
What the witness is referring to.
Okay. Or Mr. Emmett, if that still poses a problem, don't hesitate to let me know.
May I, please, if, if.
It's already in the public domain, it's already in the public domain.
If, if, if there's a publicly available document, as I, I don't know what it is that.
I understand.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We're both, we're both finding out as we go.
Miss Associate, would you bring up please LCC-014.002.0515? And.
LCC dot 004 dot 002 dot 0515?
Or that document? I'm sorry, I'm terribly sorry, I'll just confirm. It's document LCC dot 014 dot 002 dot 0515, and that can be brought up. And it's the Liverpool City Council Waste Management and Resource Recovery Strategy, dated August 2021. And Mr. Paisley, in your evidence, at times you occasionally referred to the strategy that was determined.
Yeah.
Which I think at one section foreshadowed the mattress shredding facility. Is this the document that you're referring to?
Yes, and we just have to be careful because when we shared this, certain elements of this to the public, we had this particular thing redacted, which was the strategic land acquisition section. I don't think it goes into the detail that the Arcadis report did, but it may show the area that we're looking at.
Excuse me for a minute. I un.
Like, maybe it's public now, I'm not aware.
Could you just excuse me?
Hang on, hang on.
Just to begin with, would you please, could we please go to page underscore 0110? No, sorry, 0110. You can see this is section 17 references. Can we move down the document? Can you see under public space cleansing stroke litter, the second dot point refers to Arcadis, excuse me, and WSROC, Western Sydney Regional Litter and Illegal Dumping Baseline Project? You see that reference? You've got to say yes on that.
Yes, so that's, that's public, but I can't, I don't feel like I can explain the significance of that.
I'm, can I just?
Just want to.
Can I take it question by question? It really would help. I've taken you to the reference section and the reference to what appears to be some kind of report dealing with that project.
Yeah.
When you were speaking about work that Arcadis had done previously, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
And can I just ask, again, step by step, that report wasn't a specific report for Liverpool City Council, but was a report that was commissioned by what, a number of councils or by whom?
WestROC commissioned it, just to give a bit of context. They were, we were part of a joint venture procurement activity called Project 24. So we combined with a number of councils in the southwestern Sydney region to tender together. And this particular report was looked at as a potential option to, you know, to potentially pursue. It never really got off the ground, but yeah. You know, like if we bought a transfer station or something like that, they were, they were saying, maybe these councils can potentially buy a transfer station and potentially put that in tendering documents to be a bit more attractive, to get a better, better deal for the region. And that, that's just pretty much the very basic explanation of what that was. But it was just a, something that WestROC had pursued. I think it happened before I, I came around.
All right.
Yeah.
Now, just trying to get back to the issue that I was asking you about, is it your understanding that in that project.
Yeah.
There was some examination of available land that if the project was adopted, could be used for the purposes of the project?
Could be useful, yes.
And your understanding is that in this report, there might have been further elaboration of sites that might be available?
Yes, from my recollection, there were a number of sites identified around Sydney. Yeah.
And getting back to what I was asking you about with the mattress recycling operation, you gave evidence that you commissioned Arcadis into a study in a particular piece of land, and that was after you came back. You then said that the particular piece of land was more in terms of a region. I'm just trying to work out, again at a general level, is there overlap between what was considered in that project report and what you commissioned Arcadis to look at in early 2023? And I'm not asking you to identify the region, rather whether there's overlap.
Again, I do want to be heard on that, if there is, and I'm particularly conscious of the time.
I understand the point.
It may be there's no problem with answering that question, it may be there is a problem. Can I have an opportunity to take instructions on?
Yes, we might return to it after lunch. I think the question, I understand the issue you're raising. We're going to take the lunch break now. If you wouldn't mind being back here ready to go again a couple of minutes before 2pm, that'd be fantastic. And is there anything else I need to do before we adjourn?
Yeah.
No, thanks, Commissioner.
All right, we'll adjourn till 2pm.